All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will be reconvening the public session of the meeting around 7 o'clock. (end of transcript)
Good evening, everyone. My name is William Iainuzi. I'm president of the Board of Education and we are about to reconvene the public session of the meeting. Colleagues, can I get a motion and a second to reconvene the public session of the meeting?
So move Clayton Fernandez.
Second Ross.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our board meeting. We have a very special board meeting tonight where we are welcoming our first ever student board member Cameron Tong. So I am going to ask Cameron to meet me up by the podium where I'm going to administer the oath of office. And then if she has any words she would like to say and any people on the dais, any of my fellow board members would like to give any speech or congratulations, we will do that. So Cameron, let's go meet up by the podium. So Cameron, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Cameron Tong.
I, Cameron Tong.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New York.
Of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of student board member.
Of student board member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the City School District.
Of the City School District.
Of the city of New Rochelle.
Of the city of New Rochelle.
For the term commencing.
For the term commencing.
On October 23rd.
On October 23rd.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
And ending on.
And ending on.
June 30th, 2026.
And ending on June 30th, 2026.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. We're going to have you come over here. You're going to sign this book that every board member in the history of this school district signs.
So at this time, for our community who might be watching at a later date or at home, Board President William Iainuzi has walked over. Board of Education Student Ex-Officio Trustee Tong to sign the historical Book of Signatures of every board member who has served in this capacity in the history of New Rochelle. And it's important that we recognize that this is a moment in history. Trustee Tong is the first student board member on the Board of Education. So we are witnessing history in New Rochelle and in the state. So let's give her another round of applause.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Reynolds, our Superintendent of Schools, Central Office Leadership, the New Rochelle Community, and the outstanding students of New Rochelle High School. My name is Cameron Tong and I'm honored and grateful to serve as the first student trustee on the City School District of New Rochelle Board of Education. My family, friends, and I deeply appreciate this incredible opportunity to represent the student voice of our district. As I continue to grow in this role, my vision is to strengthen the bridge between the remarkable student body of New Rochelle High School and our Board of Education and Superintendent. I look forward to sharing regular updates with the New Rochelle community about the exciting and innovative work happening in our school. Additionally, I plan to collaborate with our many student organizations to create opportunities for them to highlight their achievements and contributions. New Rochelle High School offers a wide range of rigorous programs, including robotics, architecture and engineering, science research, and performative and visual arts, among many others. When you visit our school, I encourage you to explore the banners that share valuable information about our diverse programs and opportunities. Finally, I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to our student government for their trust, diligence, and thoughtful selection process that led to my appointment. I am equally thankful to Dr. Reynolds and President Iainuzi for their guidance and encouragement as I prepare to take on this responsibility. Thank you all for your continued support and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much, Cameron. So I had actually had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Reynolds and Dr. Attila's and Cameron at the high school a couple of weeks ago to start preparing her. And then just moments ago, Cameron was invited to our executive session, so we got a chance to meet her before we came out here. And I just want to say that she's an amazing young woman. I'm really happy and excited for you to be joining us. And I'm excited to hear from your perspective how our district is doing and how our high school is doing. So welcome aboard. Would any other of my colleagues like to bring any welcomes? Yeah.
Let's see, welcome. You'll learn how to use this, hopefully. I still need to learn. Congratulations. We're super excited of you and what an amazing representative from the high school and from our community. Just in the three minutes we got to spend with you prior, I think that you will bring a lot to the board. We'll learn a lot from you and hopefully you'll learn a lot from us and wish you well as you start this new adventure.
Welcome. I also want to say a special thank you for all of her friends and family that came out. The principal, her fan club. It says a lot what you all think about her. And I think this is a great seed planted tonight for future students to think about their work with our Board of Ed. And I hope that you know that we'll take very good care of her, but we want you to do the same. So thanks for being part of the process.
You go on. Any other of my colleagues? Ms. Williams?
Oh, welcome Cameron. Very excited to serve with you in the New Rochelle School Board. According to Tip O'Neill, all government is local, and this is hyper-local government. And you're going to really learn a lot. And you might decide that you want to run for the school board or another public office to really listen to the community and make sure that we're providing the best services for our community and our neighbors and our family and friends. Welcome.
Cameron, welcome to the Board of Education. So excited to have you here and so excited to hear the voices of our students on our board. So look forward to serving with you this coming year.
Perfect. And please stick around. I know we do have one discussion item and public comment, but we are having a nice little reception afterwards right here outside the chambers to honor Cameron and there will be light refreshments being served. Alright, perfect. Alright, everyone, we're going to move on to our next item of the agenda, which is announcements by Board of Education members. Do any of my colleagues have any announcements they would like to make? I can go first. I want to congratulate the New Rochelle High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team. They won their leagues and they have their first playoff game at New Rochelle High School Tuesday at five o'clock on McKenna Field. And I'm really excited to be a part of that and witness that. Anybody else? No? Okay. We are now going to move on to the superintendent's report. So Dr. Reynolds, I'll throw it over to you.
Thank you very much, President Iainuzi, to our board trustees. Good evening to our friends and family who are here in the audience. I thank you for being here to support Cameron. Cameron's going to be here every month, so please, let's fill our seats this way moving forward. But to everyone, I would like to wish you a good evening. Just to reinforce, I am very proud to reintroduce our new Rochelle community, to our new Rochelle community, our 2025 Student Government Board Selected Ex-Officio Student Board of Education Trustee. That's a long title. Ms. Tong, who is one of the members of the class of 2026. So further explaining this role, and you've heard a bit about it, but I want to give all of the legal leads behind this role. So to further explain this role, its creation by state mandate aims to recognize the value of including students' voices on all of our school boards and thus empowering students by giving them a voice in the decisions that affect their education and well-being and the operation of schools. It also provides an opportunity for young New Rochelians to build skills and habits of civic engagement. So just as trustee William said. Pursuant to state statute, ex-officio student board members are entitled to sit with the board members at all public meetings and private hearings of the board and may participate in other board activities and responsibilities at the discretion of the board, including providing valuable input on the strategic plan and district goals by representing the perspectives and needs of the student body during discussions or planning meetings. What this does do, though, is it does not provide an opportunity for trustee Tong to be involved in anything that's considered to be executive session or privately held conversations that are related to student issues where student names or identifiers can be mentioned or adult issues where adult names or identifiers can be mentioned. Ex-officio student board members do not have a voting right either. So if the board votes on anything, usually on a monthly basis, sometimes twice a month, on any of our agenda items, the student board member does not get to vote on that either. They also may not attend, as I said, executive sessions nor any other meeting or hearing that is not open to the public. This is my personal note and I'm asking our community to really hone in on this. It is imperative to note, ex-officio student trustee Tong and any future ex-officio student board members are exactly that. They are our students. At no time should questions from the public be directed to the ex-officio student board member, nor should any student in this seat be directly or indirectly referenced by public comment. In protection of our young people, I ask that we as a community commit to preserving the mental and emotional safety of our ex-officio student board members. So again, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for accepting, because you didn't have to, but thank you for accepting the nomination. And again, we greet you tonight, Cameron. Now, as we're on the title and subject of board members, during the week of October 14th to 18th, we celebrated School Board Recognition Week to recognize our school board members for their commitment to our New Rochelle Public School and children. Our school board members take one of the most important citizen responsibilities, overseeing the education of the community's youth. Our Board of Education guides our school system and ensures our public schools are flexible and responsive to the needs of the New Rochelle community. Our school board is comprised of volunteers, so those people who are sitting at the dais are not receiving any compensation for this. They are strictly volunteers. They do not receive, like I said, don't receive any compensation for their service. There are individuals within the community who dedicate their time to improving public education. With schoolchildren being their primary focus, school board members create a shared vision for the future of education, set the direction of the school district to achieve high student performance, provide accountability for student achievement results, develop a budget to present it to the community, align district resources to improve achievement, and support a healthy school district culture in which to work and to learn. Please join me in giving a round of applause to our trustees of the Board of Education for their selfless dedication to the students of the City School District of New Rochelle. So we do have our, oh, okay, in your chairs or on the dais, you should have a very nice athletic bag, but that bag is filled with contents. Firstly, for the first time ever, we have the official Board of Education hat. So you are proudly invited to wear that and to demonstrate it at our games and our community events and at our Thanksgiving Day Parade here in New Rochelle and our famous pancake breakfast before that. Also included will be your certificates from the New York State School Boards Association congratulating you on your years of service and dedication. And there's some other trinkets in there that you should not share with your family members. So if they attack you when you go home and ask for the bracelet, tell them no. But again, this is just, just, again, old-school eraser, right? So this is just our thank you for all of the time, and this is to our community. You know, sometimes we find fault with some of the decisions that are made. Sometimes we don't agree with some of the conversations that are held. Sometimes we want to blame someone for something we're not happy with. And these nine individuals, now 10 individuals, sit here and do this out of the goodness of their heart and really with the betterment of New Rochelle at the forefront of their decision-making. So tonight, let's give our board members a round of applause and again, thank them for the work that they did. And with that, President Iainuzi, I am done with my report and I relinquish the microphone.
Thank you very much, Dr. Reynolds. I have two more things. I apologize. I really should have written down my board announcements. I completely forgot that the varsity, girls varsity soccer team also made the playoffs. They will be playing tomorrow at Mamaroneck High School. Will they be competing against Mamaroneck, who they beat twice already this season? So apologies for leaving that. So apologies for leaving that out. And I also just wanted to highlight, two weeks ago, the city of New Rochelle had an Italian-American recognition ceremony, and one of our very own teachers, Ms. Melissa Morganti, was honored for 23 years of serving New Rochelle High School as an Italian teacher, an advisor of the Italian Club. She was my teacher at New Rochelle High School. She was my advisor when I was president of the Italian Club. So I was very happy to see her getting recognized, and I just want to, everyone just give her a round of applause because it was amazing, amazing honor. Okay, so we're going to move on to our discussion item. We have one tonight called Vision 2030. So a couple of board meetings ago, we adopted the board goals for the year, and one was having a discussion amongst the board members about areas that we want to see explored more in the City School District of New Rochelle. So basically, the prompt was, if we had no money, no constraint in the world, what would we want to envision our district looking like? No money limits, no money limit and no constraints, what would our vision of New Rochelle schools look like? So tonight is our first opportunity for us to explore that, where I'm inviting my board and all the trustees here to throw out any suggestions they have. Today is just an exploration phase, nothing's happening, obviously. This is for us to talk about what we would like to see. In November, we would consolidate a lot of the ideas into different buckets to see which ones connect. December, we are looking for community input on these buckets and ideas, really asking the community what they think of some of the ideas that are thrown out there. And then in January, at a board retreat, the board will narrow that down to four to five different areas and asks the superintendent to create working groups for each area to see the feasibility. Colleagues, you have any questions on that? I know that was very wordy and a lot. Okay, great. So I'm going to put up a Word doc here, and I'm going to take notes on different ideas each board member has about what they want the vision of New Rochelle to look like. Just give me one second while I log in. Okay, perfect. Let me make it bigger. Perfect. Would any board member like to start? Any suggestions they want to throw out there? I can start. So one idea that has been thrown around in the past, and that several school districts near us do, especially Austining, is something called the Princeton Model and looking at like the middle schools for a Princeton model and what that would look like. So potentially having fifth and sixth grade for the entire district in one school and seventh and eighth grade in another school. Some of the reasons I've thought about this in the past is bringing the different parts of the community earlier together and really eliminating north and south end perceptions. So that's one idea that I had that I wanted to throw out there.
While you write that up, should I?
Yeah.
Okay. I, one idea, which I think I sort of threw out before, was thinking about, we have a lot of seniors that are sitting here in our boardroom, and it would be great that as part of our education that we provide to our students, that we're able to give them some real-world experience in these different professions and starting to really, and I know, I think, some of the schools sort of do it on their own, where they might have a lawyer come in and it's a lawyer for a day, or maybe it's an accountant for the day, but where we have exposure to our students kind of throughout their careers with us to what their potentials could be across the way. Because when you get to your senior year and you have to write this application and think about where do I want to be, then you actually have a sense because you've had some exposure to these different sort of potential pathways as you're, as you actually have to start thinking about what to do after you graduate from high school.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
One of the things that I think is causing a lot of senior stress is the Regents exams. So I think in 2030, I would like to see an alternative to that so that you guys can focus on the stronger student versus the best test score and tutoring and all of that. So 2030, I would like to see some of that changed.
Thank you, Ms. Clay Fernandez. Another thing that I wanted to explore is looking at Barnard and its composition. Right now, it's a pre-K through second school. What would it look like if it was a K through five school of some sort? I know we have a lot of the kids in the City Park area that get bused all the way to Davis, so maybe exploring that and what the composition of Barnard would look like.
I would say another thing is looking at all of our district lines, and so many people are going halfway across town to go to school. And how do we look at our district lines and such so that students in those neighborhoods can go to their neighborhood schools? And so we don't quite have to have all this weird, gangly lines that however we've been sort of cut up over the years.
To piggyback off of that, and this is one of the things I have in my list, is the Lincoln Attendance Zone. And, you know, for over, was it close to 60 years now, the kids in that neighborhood were bused all over the city. So really looking at solving that issue once and for all, and whether it be making Webster the neighborhood school or building some sort of school for the Lincoln Attendance Zone, but really focusing on that area and ensuring that we have, we don't really have to bus kids all over the city of New Rochelle and be on a bus 40 to 50 minutes.
And, and if money was no issue, I'll build on that, too, is at some point, we've talked about this building and having it become back to our school district. And I know there's other things out there, but we're talking about what, what the possibilities could be. But could we in some way actually even think about our high school and having some, whether it's, because it's 3,000 students, would we potentially want to make it smaller? And you could have some different specialization between the different schools, and depending what you'd like to do, you'd have some particular options. And so that this building could go back to being and serving our students.
I think me and Ms. Ross have like a lot in common because I have the whole, I have the same thing here about like a specific ninth grade school because of how big New Rochelle High School is and focusing on that. Ms. Klein?
Also, looking sort of at the high school age is somehow encompassing other options beyond, besides college and looking at trade schools and bringing either the BOCs programming back in so we're not busing children out again. So bringing back that trade school. And similarly, is looking at the trends in special education and the needs coming up, you know, in the younger children now, is somehow becoming the experts in special ed so that other districts want to send their kids to us, so that we become those specialized schools or we have a program, you know, that everybody wants to come here to New Row and have their kids in the school. So something in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. I think me and you are on the same wavelength, too, because one of my items is also like a, creating an OTPT center here in New Rochelle for our special education students.
So drivers that, I think, on out-of-school time, for all of our students to have safe and accountable drivers and training and safety so that by the time you hit the college turf, you know how to drive and you got your license and you're super, super safe. Paid for by the folks in New Rochelle in out-of-school time. So like, I don't know, the brakes.
I would like, it would be great to see, and I don't have an exact idea for this yet, but what can we do to continue to track the best teachers and staff and build up the reputation so that we're getting best educators and principals and everyone that is charged with teaching the students?
I'd also like to think about how could we be more innovative in how we think about teaching our ELL students across our district? Because the population continues to grow, and I just, I'm not sure what we do today, and I'd say this is like a puzzle across our country, really works. And so how do we actually think about trying new and innovative things? And maybe we won't totally always get it right, but actually try things that are more inclusive and can include our families and our students in their learning in a more comprehensive manner.
Yeah. One of the items I have is specifically around like New Rochelle High School and really like redesigning the house system. So we have houses one through four, but they're really just to house kids. So like what specialty school can each house be or like what can we connect it to? And that also goes along with like Huguenot Academy and like, how does Huguenot Academy as a program fit with the high school and what permanent housing can we have for them?
I would like to just see the continued parent, school, community partnership, which maybe is not a huge cost. So maybe this is something we can continue to grow and we, we're doing a great job and just continuing to help our parents make it easier to figure out the right educational fits and opportunities and styles for their children so they understand how to utilize the things that this district has to offer. I think we could continue to grow in that area.
Yeah. You know, and I actually have that written down, too, is that some, some districts have like family, community engagement centers. So maybe that's something we can look at as well.
I would love to expand our overall, both, really in our high school, our college advising, such that, and I know we've had some good changes over the years, but to continue to improve so that parents and families start meeting with their advisors in the ninth grade and that it's kind of continuous. Because when you get to your senior year, at that point, like school's already happened. But how do we actually build and, and enable our students and our families, particularly those that maybe haven't, our first gen students, and we have a lot of those, educating them about what higher education looks like and how you need to prepare yourself for that and thinking about your course load and the rigor, just all of the things that you need to think about. And then I think also thinking about that in, in the sense of when we think about BOCs, but really more very comprehensive as to how we start to approach that, but really approaching children from the time they start high school.
And a dream is a wish your heart makes from Walt Disney. And I have a few things. I would love to see a school rebuilt in the Lincoln Avenue Attendance Zone and also a forever home for the Huguenot Academy. Because for some of our students, they need a smaller school facility because New Rochelle High School is simply too big for them. I would also like to see more magnet schools, schools where there are offerings for more students. And also, I remember being a cheerleader and it was very stressful every year trying out to be on the cheerleading squad. And one time I did not make it and I was devastated. So I think that like some students who try out for PAVE and they don't make it, they're devastated. So can we offer something else for our students? You know, they're competing against other students, and it doesn't mean that they're not as good, but it just means that other students achieved higher scores than they did. And then on the other end, you know, the kids are kids. So I mean, do they have to be Broadway performers? You know, just, you just love to perform or what, whatever you love, you have a passion for. Is there like a high-level program for you? So I would like to see that. Also, better busing and also less congestion for the busing. So that would be something with the city. But, you know, just easier for students to, you know, you know, to get on the buses from, you know, from their home and also when they're at school. And also, I would like to see more technology classes. When I was in school many moons ago, we had wood shop, we had metal shop, we had home act. But I'm an educator and I noticed that around 2002, all of those classes were taken away. And what became technology was computer technology, which is important and coding is important. However, it's very important to know how to put physical things together. So I would like to see that as an offering. And also, I would like to see like a higher salary increase for civil service workers and also for teaching assistants. So these are just my wishes and my dreams. So I think moving ahead, looking at making these things happen.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
You're welcome.
Sorry. This is one, it's more kind of a, I think, a cultural vision and not to say that our schools aren't there today, but continuing to create a, an environment where our students feel comfortable to be who they are and to express themselves, whether they have contrarian points of view, but that we have and promote a real sense of community and tolerance. Because I do feel like our current adult climate is very intolerant, and so I want to make sure that we're teaching our young people to become better adult citizens than some of the examples that our current adults are, are creating.
Ms. Jacob, do you have something?
Yes, and I think there might be mixed opinions on this, but piggybacking almost in the reverse of trustee Williams. I would like to see if the district could explore actually the removal of technology at the early education age. I know we have put in computers, but I think it might not be the most beneficial for our young children, or I would like to get a better understanding of the pros and cons. I'm raising young kids in this district because I know we are giving the Chromebooks to our young children. I'd like to, you know, have a discussion about that and, and see where the value is coming from that versus using those funds differently.
And I agree with you because the kind of technology that I would like to see is just building things like, you know, wood shop and metal shop.
You said technology and I thought about it, sorry.
Right.
It wasn't counter to you.
Oh, because that's what it used to be called, technology. And then all of a sudden, computer technology is the only technology, but, you know, actually building physical things, that used to be technology, because there were no computers back then. I hate to deep myself.
I also was looking at like what our gifted and talented programs look like and how we can start at a very early age. I know we do have Kaleidoscope for fourth and fifth grade, the district-wide Kaleidoscope, but how can we expand that to include more programs? And making sure we have teachers certified as gifted and talented teachers as well as continuing really our numerous APs that we offer. We are one of the largest, our district has a lot of AP classes, more than a lot of local districts. So continuing the amount of APs that we are offering.
And trustee Ayanuzi, just piggybacking off of what you said in terms of gifted and talented, I think maybe an idea piggybacking off of this is, I think at the elementary level, that's really where our differentiation has been. But when we think about even the, the vision for more in the high school for differentiation and programming, maybe some of that can be introduced earlier. So it's not just about whether you got into Kaleidoscope or not, but maybe there are dance and arts programs in the elementary that start to help kids foster their love of those things and, and get them more prepared for the high school programming.
And I guess I'll be a bit contrarian to what you guys are suggesting, but I, I almost think we have too many AP courses and that we ought to look at attendance for all of those and which ones are undersubscribed and which ones are oversubscribed and potentially consolidate some of them so that
consolidate some of them so that we really have excellent programs and we put our resources kind of really focused so that they're all excellent and we have continuing to serve our children with quality programs.
I actually, I agree with you, even if that seems contradictory to what I said. I also think at the same time, you have to use resources equitably and fairly and make sure they're being used most efficiently. So I agree, we need to look at that.
And just to piggyback on what you both said, with AP, just making our students aware of AP, because some students might think, well, I'm not AP material. It might not be something that they're aware of, or they might think that they don't have the grades for it. You know, creating an opportunity for every student to be able to take an AP, to, to understand the importance of it and then supporting them so that they can take APA, AP classes and be successful with the AP classes.
Yeah.
Sorry, again, since we're dreaming.
Yes.
Is, I think, you know, we talk about AP, we talk about gifted, we talk about special education. The one thing that I think a lot of, where I hear from a lot of parents are how about all the kids in the middle? And so, and I think with some of these programs, we've started to think about that in, in between, but really also ensuring that all of those students that are in the middle feel seen and heard and that we are offering classes, programs, activities, whatever that is, so that we're, we're able to meet the needs of all of, all of our students.
And I would also add to that, increase parent, student involvement in some of the future steps for high school in actual middle school. So you kind of know what's ahead and you're not like hit with last minute choices and you hit the ground running come freshman year instead of, you know, having blind spots. So I think more parent engagement, we'd like to see more of that so that, and also to be advocates for the kids who don't have the advocates. So a little bit more of that in middle school to build for a better high school experience, I think is critical.
Thank you. I don't want to put you on the spot trustee, our new trustee, but is there anything that you think and think of about the high school that you might want to, that you might have thought about? If not, no worries. You just have to push it down hard.
Hello?
Okay.
I think to emphasize what you said about the students in the middle and what you were saying about continuing, like expanding the amount of APs. There are a lot of students that feel like APs are widely offered at our school and there are students that feel like APs are pushed upon them at our school. So I think definitely emphasizing that middle ground where students might feel like they're ready for an AP but might not have the grades for it, just to give them the chance to see what they can accomplish in those classes and see if they can move up from that.
Thank you for that. Do any of my colleagues have any last comments, statements, ideas? Okay, great. So next steps with this, we have this 31 items on this list. We're going to start consolidating them, putting them into buckets. And then at our November meeting, we'll present the buckets of the different areas. In December, we will have community input. We are talking about potentially like community cafe type of thing where we have these around the room and people can go around putting stickers next to different ideas or write different comments. We're still fleshing out what that would look like. But colleagues, thank you very much for this. This was great and it's a good first step in working on our, our board goals. So thank you.
Excuse me, President Ian Uzi. Okay, that was one thing that I, community involvement. So, you know, being on committees and being part of our decision-making process.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, great. We are going to move on to the next item of our agenda, which is our liaison reports. Do any of my colleagues have any reports they would like to present?
I can present. From the finance committee, we met earlier this month and we were just really following up from our audit. So we had independent auditors take a look at our financials. We passed with flying colors. There were no outstanding issues, so yay us. And the, one of the follow-up questions I think that board members had had was, we were surprised that we landed right on target. We were actually slightly under budget and it was just because there were some additional funds that kind of came in towards the end of the year. So that was the good news. We then talked a bit about for this year, how do we just ensure that all of the new processes that Carlos Lial and team in the business office are inputting, that our business, that our, our leaders of our different buildings, our building leaders and different groups, just making sure that they continue to follow those processes so that we don't have any surprises throughout this year and towards the end of the year. And lastly, we were just talking about our budgeting and thinking about the process already for next year, because that's the way budgeting works, is you just finish one year and you're off to the next. And so just talking about sort of how do we prepare ourselves for planning for next year's budget.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Ms. Cleon Fernandez?
Yes, so on the 16th, we had our New York State School Board's big annual business meeting. And that was a virtual four o'clock start, 10 o'clock end. It was a long one, but it was very involved because it includes, it included all of the proposed bylaws and amendments, resolutions that were proposed by the July 18th deadline. And it went really, really smooth. It was, I think, the second one they've done virtually. So there were a lot of details for the prep for it. You know, you had to review the proposals and the amendments in a few days in advance. But long meeting, but very successful and great for New York State. NISBA is an amazing organization. We're very lucky to have their guidance and insight. The second one that I had back to back was the Green Schools. It was the kickoff meeting at Amy's Green House. And that was terrific because an organization partnered with Green Schools. I don't know if you're familiar with CEOP. It's the, the top, the hot topic was fighting food waste in New Rochelle schools. There'll be more on that with a formal committee report. But CEOP stands for Children's Environmental Literacy Foundation. And I just thought it was very relevant to where we are with harvesting food and finding the waste and finding proper ways to just modify a billion dollar loss of a business. There's so much money lost in food waste. So I hope that gets a little bit more space later, but just in the essence of time, very well-run, the Songcatchers did an opening. Just a, just a very organic group that really cares about overall wellness and environment for our, for our town.
Thank you, Ms. Cleon Fernandez. Any other of my colleagues have any liaison reports to make? I'll just quickly, I have joined two new committees this month. One, working with Dr. Artiles, the New Rochelle Fund, the New Rochelle High School PTSA on the 100th anniversary of New Rochelle High School. So we have some grand ideas coming and we're excited. 2026, New Rochelle High School was built in 1926, so we were very, very excited. And I also will be representing the board on the City of New Rochelle's 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence in 1776. All right, great. So we are going to move on to public comment. I'm going to read a short statement and then we'll go into our first speaker. So ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment period of the meeting. The Board of Education adopted policy 1230 in April 2022 to ensure all members of the public had the opportunity to speak at both of our board meetings each month. We believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, understand the board will not respond to your concerns and questions tonight. We take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or if the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel and students. Please know however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now, our nation and our community are polarized in a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. Tonight, we've set aside 30 minutes for public comment where each speaker who has signed up before 3:30 today has three minutes to speak. If a person requests to speak after 3:30, speakers may sign up in person at the meeting with the clerk and will be afforded the opportunity to speak during the public comment period if time permits. Our first speaker of the night is Ms. Donna Henry.
Good evening. Um, Melinda Kelly was here. This is when the district was its best. This district is slowly going down. I'm a 12-month employee. I can't take a personal day before, after a holiday. That's kind of interesting because it just got thrown at us. You have a lot of administrations up here and they seem to be doing whatever they want to do and they want to do email and they don't even want to meet with you in person. But yet y'all want children to put down their phones and learn how to communicate better. But no one up here wants to communicate in person. I mean, we're just now leaving out of a budget from 2023 underneath a different administrator. But at the end of the day, up here, you're struggling with everything when it comes to making a contract for us. Money's being wasted through facilities. Do anybody monitor anything? This is what I need to know. It seems like nothing is being monitored or anything. I, I see more than what you could ever see. We're understaffed since layoff, understaffed in all departments. That's why y'all having issues. You want to know why y'all don't have money? Because you're paying out for too many lawsuits and you're paying out for too many contracts for people you want to let go and you have to finish paying out their contract. To me, there's no respect for the employees. Y'all don't see it, but I see it. Some of the administrations in different departments are rude, nasty and disrespectful. You, once again, you don't see it. We see it. When is someone going to treat us with respect? We do the hardest job, keeping the buildings up, making sure it's sanitized, making sure it's clean. This is our job, okay? Is it an easy job? Absolutely not. But we do the best that we can do. You have to remember one thing. History isn't a story for comfort. History is not there for you to like or dislike, but it's there for you to learn from it and to do better. It's not there for you to erase it because it belongs to all of us. In order for y'all to do better, you have to be better. Y'all have to get this district on board. Y'all know what's going on. Look what happened to the little boy in Jefferson. It's all on the news. It's no secret. Why? It's a shortage of staff. So what I need to know is when is y'all going to take the effort and making sure all these buildings are secure before you actually go forward to do anything else? But I do take my hat, my hat off to Mr. Michael Hildebrand because the next day he pulled his staff, security and custodian and gave him what he wanted them to do with locking gates and everything during different time periods. What this administrator should have did the next day, you should have called every principal up here and you should have sat down and had a discussion about safety.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Next up is Ms. Otilia Taylor Tanner.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Thank you for your service and welcome, Ms. Tong. Welcome to the, to the board. And I appreciated what you said from a student's point of view. So welcome. So I'm glad Ms. Henry, who was an advocate for the community, spoke. The topic of conversation I like to speak about is dignity. And of course, the topic of conversation regarding the most unfortunate event was not the first. And those of us who worked in the district or still work in the district like Ms. Henry know that it won't be the last and it was not the first incident. So I believe it's imperative to create safety systems in place which immediately and accurately report incidences which cause our most fragile students to remain unsafe in and out of the classroom while making certain of a proactive approach instead of reactive. Proactive approaches would begin with proper staffing. An example would be adhering to the New York State guidelines according to the students' IEP and 504 programs. I'm most interested in how the district plans to keep our differently-abled students educated in a dignified manner. We can begin with not starting the school year out of variance, which means that an 812 means an 812. It doesn't mean a 1012, not properly staffed. When someone is out sick, that means that you replace them with a qualified individual to make sure that these students stay safe. Stillness in a seat for five and a half hours is cruel and unusual punishment for some of our students. It bothers me because we spend over $5 million a year sending students out of district to go to places that have sensory gyms. We could be doing that work right here because no one could do it better for our students than us. Okay. Additionally, on the topic of classrooms, please refer to the New York State recommended square footage for special education classrooms. I've found that the minimum square footage to be 450 square feet for six students and up to 900 square usable feet for 12 to 15 students. In conclusion, keeping dignity in mind as our, as my main focus. We can start the conversation regarding Assembly Bill, Assembly Bill A977B. I've spoken on this in the past. I've written about it as well. I followed up with Senator Mayer as well. And she's assured me, her office has assured me that by March of 2026, we have to have policy in place in this district as it pertains to the dignified treatment of toilet-trained children who are finding this to be a new practice by qualified people. So we should be, I would, it would be nice to start the conversation, be a little proactive. I still have time, sir. Thank you. To be a little proactive about finding ways to proactively, in a dignified manner, toilet-train children. But that's coming up and I think the district has to have a policy in place by March of 2026. I suggest talking with the special ed community to see what's best.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Would anybody else like to sign up for public comment? Ms. Miriam DeCim?
Good evening, Miriam DeCim. Welcome to our student representative. We have this thing that happened with this young child and I just want to remind us how we spent $12 million on vestibules for active shooters, putting that out in the mindset of our children and our community. And it's not to say that we should hide our heads in the sand over some of the things that happened, but we decided to spend all that money on vestibules that pretty much we already had in our system and never used it if it was so important for safety. But that didn't stop things that are happening on a day-to-day basis, like a five-year-old child leaving the school district. And that's not the first time. And the parent calling and asking about the child and being reassured that the child was okay when the child was not on the grounds. I think that's something that we really need to take a look at. It's, it's unacceptable because we're listening to outside forces, security companies telling us this is what we need to be secure, when the real things that keep us secure, making our kids feel empowered and involved and belong. Because that's usually what you hear of the kids who kind of, you know, do things that aren't right, that they didn't feel that way, right? That they felt rejected. If we would spend our money on those things, we would be so much more secure than the fear mongering that we do. And then spending $12 million when we were already in a process of not having enough money was totally unacceptable and reckless. So that was something that, you know, I really wanted to point out, how we spend our money on things that really does not reassure us and really provide the safety and the education, which is our main. provide the safety and the education, which is our main thing that we need to do with our kids. The other thing is, is that you had a lot of lofty ideas here, but there's so much that we have to focus on, and I'm not sure where this is all heading, but we just left this big budget issue. We started the school year. Where are we? Where is all the data? How are we doing? What, what did we change? What are we, what are we, you know, experiencing this year? We're expecting new budget cuts. How are we preparing for it? None of that continuity is happening. That should be the first topic, and yet, we're not hearing that. The other thing that we have to talk about is this new program. You've put out all of the community folks. We're not getting the announcements of the Board of Ed meetings. I've let some of the folks know about this. It wasn't supposed to happen with your square parent programming. It needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Desim. Would anybody else like to sign up for public comment tonight? All right, seeing none, we have no items to vote on tonight. So colleagues, can I get a motion of second? Oh, sorry. Our next meeting is on Thursday, November 6th, here at City Hall. Colleagues, can I get a motion of second to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, Williams.
Second, Jacob.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Everyone, please, we're going to have some, a nice reception for Cameron right here in the, outside the room. So please join us.